If I can ask members of council to please take their seats. We'll call this meeting to order. Members, if we can, please stand for the national anthem. Please remain standing and during this time, please remember the following persons who have passed away: Jessie Edna Bench, Jack Berger, Margaret Evelyn Fleck, Maria Mckella Pusello, Anne Ireland, Len Stanley, George Vassalopolis, John Doe, Crystal Papino, Tabitha Lewis, Hang Bo and John Doe, the victims of the attack on the Jolo Cathedral in the Philippines, and Carlton R. York. Thank you. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Onishnabe, the Chipewall, the Hudnochoni, and the Wendak peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Maytee peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. For the benefit of those who are connected to the Internet, the city clerk has posted all of the agenda materials for today's meeting at toronto.ca/council. Members, I want to acknowledge the city clerk and her staff for the new anthem recording and video that started our meeting today. Thank you to the staff. The anthem was performed by the singing out Toronto's largest LGBTO-plus-mixed community chorus, composed of more than 140 members who reflect the diversity of the city. Video images and editing were provided by the city's in-house photo/video production and unit of the city clerk's office. Members, we have a presentation this morning to recognize the Toronto paramedic services team on winning the International Trauma and Life Support Competition. I would like to call upon Mayor Tory to come forward for this presentation.
Do you have to turn this on now? Oh, it's a new microphone, is it?
It's a new microphone.
Can we afford that? Okay. Right. That's a simple reason why it wasn't working.
I didn't know that.
No, well, thank you for that support, so I don't look like I'm completely out of it. Madam Speaker, I would hope in this term of office, good morning to everybody, and I hope in this term of office, this will be the first of many important trophies that are celebrated here in City Council on behalf of the city of Toronto, but none would give us greater pride than today to celebrate and recognize, as we try to do any chance we can, the just excellent members of our Toronto paramedic service. In November of 2018, a team of Toronto paramedics participated again in the International Trauma Life Support Conference, Trauma Competition, and they won first place for the second year in a row. To win once is amazing in this international competition, but for our city of Toronto and our team, to win twice is a truly significant achievement. The competition takes place annually, and in 2018, seven teams from around the world competed in a series of simulated scenarios, and participants are judged on the standard of care as adjudicated by an international trauma care organization. The winning team consisted of our paramedics Jamir Bembridge, Rachel Janer, Christopher Rotolo, and along with their coach Superintendent Martin Johnston. Christopher and Rachel are returning champions, and this is Jamir's first competition. And Rachel was also honored with the George Eliadis Memorial Award, and this award is presented to the trauma care competition participant who during the competition demonstrates the highest level of professionalism and leadership in trauma care. And if that name rings a bell with you, it well should, because it was, George Eliadis was a deputy commander of our paramedics who tragically lost his life in a motorcycle accident in 2017, and we paid tribute to him in this chamber at that time. He was also a dedicated member of the International Trauma Life Support Organization. What is particularly, I think, noteworthy about this, but it should come as no surprise, given the immense sense of community spirit and community contribution of our, all of our paramedics, from the chief down, is that this team voluntarily practiced for the competition in evenings and outside of their regular shifts, so they stepped up to volunteer to be part of this competition, and then brought such great credit to the city of Toronto in doing as well as they did in the competition. And so I will say to you, you have set an admirable precedent here, which we hope will be repeated by other Toronto teams, not just in bringing the trophy once, but in bringing it twice, and we're looking forward to seeing that good example followed, and I'd like to ask you all to come up here and bring the trophy, I think you have it with you, to be recognized formally by the council and to have a photograph taken, and so that we can all share in the celebration of your work.
Counselor... Oh, okay, there. I was looking for you, Counselor Wong-Tam. Counselor Wong-Tam, you wanted to say a few words.
I do, Madam Speaker. I just have misplaced my note for a second. You called me so quickly. If you can just... Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yesterday, January 29th, marked the second anniversary of the horrific attack and mass shooting at the Islamic Cultural Centre of Quebec City, Amaz in Quebec City. On the evening of January 29, 2017, two years ago, six men were killed and 19 others were injured. They were at their place of worship. They were congregating in prayer. My heart, and I believe our heart, goes out to the family and friends of all those victims, those who were murdered and those who were injured. This tragic incident represents a reminder, a very strong reminder, that Islamophobia remains a very real threat in our country, and it is in our collective responsibility we have to consistently call out any act of hatred, bigotry, and discrimination. Madam Speaker, I'd like us to remember those who were murdered two years ago. Adele Krim Hassani, Abdul Baker Tabi, Azidin Sufiani, Ibrahimah Barry, Khalid Bakasemi, Mamadou Tanu Barry. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. I will now call for motion to confirm the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry.
In furtherance of the comments of Counselor Wong-Tam, which I follow along in seconding that sentiment, but I just wanted to say, so that people knew that we didn't let the occasion pass by, that we did, on behalf of the City Council, issue a proclamation yesterday recognizing that this was a day of remembrance and action in respect of Islamophobia generally, but also the specific tragic events that happened in Quebec City, and that I attended an event last night on behalf of the council again and the people of Toronto to simply make the statement that as other parts of the world are seemingly running in the direction of polarization and division, we in Toronto just have to run in exactly the opposite direction and keep running as hard as we can, and it means all the things that Counselor Wong-Tam said about recognizing and speaking up and doing things in a very practical way to make sure that we remain a place that is a beacon to the world, not perfect, but a beacon to the world in terms of our respect for each other. And so I just wanted members of council to know there was an official proclamation made yesterday in recognition of that anniversary, that tragic anniversary.
Thank you. Thank you. I will now call for motion to confirm the minutes. Counselor Bradford, you have motion on the minutes from the first meeting.
Thank you, Speaker. The City Council confirmed the minutes of council from the first meeting held on December 4th, 5th, and 13, 2018, in the form supplied to the members.
Thank you. On favor, Carrie, I will now call upon the committee chairs to introduce the reports. The chairs can speak about the reports for up to five minutes. Mayor Tory, you have a motion to introduce the executive committee report.
I do, Madam Speaker. I would move that the report from meeting one of the executive committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration, and I will just speak briefly to it. There were a number of items that were considered, but I think by far the most important item, and of course, it will be a significant item, my first key item on the agenda of our meeting today, is the Housing Now initiative. This, you know, I go to great pains because I think it's proper to do so, to indicate this is but the first step in a number of things that I think we have to do to honor the wishes of the people of the city of Toronto, who I think said to us all during the course of the recent election campaign that while we want you to carry on with the work you're doing on public transit, and there are many other issues that obviously concern us, responsible finances and making sure you keep the tax burden on us reasonable, that the one thing they said that had risen to the top of their list of issues that were of concern to them and their children and their families was that of affordable housing. And I think it has certainly established in my mind the priority of this item and the need for us to be moving continuously. Somebody at the executive committee, one of the deputies, said that he hoped that the type of substantive announcement that this represents, the Housing Now initiative, would be an annual event, and I certainly would concur in that at least. In other words, that I would hope that every year, if not more frequently, we can be coming forward throughout the term of this council with initiatives as significant as this, and frankly, more frequently than annually, so that this represents a beginning. But I don't think we should underestimate for a second, Madam Speaker, the significance of this beginning. This is, and it's going to get done, because I have the determination, I know Deputy Mayor Bylaw does, and I know the members of council do, and I know the city staff do, that I think this by itself, when it gets done, when these 11 pieces of property are successfully developed into rental housing, including a substantial component of affordable housing and deeply affordable housing, hopefully participated in by as many nonprofit housing organizations as possible, I'd be very happy if the result of a competitive circumstance was they were all developed by the nonprofit sector, but that's why we're going to have a competition, to make sure that we get all the good ideas on the table. But when it's done, when it is done, it will represent the biggest expansion of affordable housing in the history of Toronto, this, at one sitting, as it were. This development as a whole, which is estimated to produce 10,000 new rental units and 3,700 affordable housing units, is something that is in excess of the size of the St. Lawrence community when it was created all those years ago, and was seen quite properly as the significant event that it was. And so I think if we do this properly, if we do this expeditiously, and we do it in a way that is meant to reach out to the broadest spectrum of people that are in the housing business, and give them all a chance to tell us what they can do for us, with obviously a very important consideration being what is the component of their proposal that is affordable, and in instances, deeply affordable and everything in between, I think it's going to make a huge contribution to getting a good start on a challenge that we have in front of us. I set a target, and that target was well discussed and well debated during the course of the election campaign, and this is a floor, not a ceiling, of 40,000 affordable units over the next 12 years. I would like us to exceed that, but this is the start, and this is the start that I hope we will allow to happen in a way that doesn't get it bogged down, as people in the city of Toronto have often done in the past, where there are so many conditions and studies and consultants and different kinds of things that you actually don't end up getting on with the job. Our city staff have moved, I think with absolutely, you know, incredible speed, to put a substantive report in front of us today that gives us a roadmap to go forward and actually get this done. There are indications from them that dependent upon the results of the RFP that will result, we could actually, in some of these cases of some of these parcels of land, have shovels in the ground to begin the process of construction next year. And I think that will be something that the residents of the city of Toronto will take note of, if we can actually move that quickly to begin to address what is a growing problem in the city. And so I commend this initiative to the members of council. It is something that is a beginning, not an end. It is a significant beginning, though. It is not another study. It is an actual series of 11 pieces of property that we've taken and I think will quite properly use, as opposed to a lot of the past practice, which was to sell these off and get money. And I'm sure that money was put to good use on various things, but in this case, we are specifically saying, no, we're not going to sell those off. What we're going to do is we're going to lease them out and make them available to the nonprofit and the housing sector generally to produce rental housing and specifically substantial amounts of affordable housing. And I will have more to say about this as the debate unfolds, but I do commend this particular item, as well as the other items that were approved by the executive committee. This one, I would note, like most of them, was approved unanimously by the executive committee, and I hope it will get the same kind of support here at City Council. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Cressy, you had, Counselor Cressy, would you introduce the border path items from last term?
I would. We have two items on the agenda here today. The first is related to heat relief, in particular around enhanced measures to mitigate the harms of heat during the, what can be dangerous, summer months, especially for vulnerable populations and people, and the second is a confidential update from our legal staff related to student nutrition. That is all that's in front of us today. I'll just keep my remarks brief. Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Menon Wong, you have a motion to introduce the civic appointments committee report?
Yes, that the report from meeting two of the civic appointments committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson, you have a motion to introduce the economic and community Councillor Thompson, you have a motion to introduce the Economic and Community Development Committee report?
Yes, good morning, Speaker. That the report from meeting one of the Economic and Community Development Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Ainsley, you have a motion to introduce the General Government and Licensing Committee report?
Good morning, everyone. The report from meeting number one of the General Government Licensing Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Pasternak, you have a motion to introduce the Infrastructure and Environment Committee report?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting one of Infrastructure and Environment Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. I would simply like to congratulate councillor McKelvey for putting her name forward as vice chair, and she was selected by her colleagues unanimously. I would like to also bring to attention two items that are before you. One is item IE 1.4, which is a series of lane closures, lane reductions, and turn restrictions that will be affecting Midtown along the Eglington-Cross Town. And I urge councillors who will be affected by that to take a close look at what's before you and how it will affect your local communities. I would also like to bring to attention councillors to IE 1.5, where committee unanimously made the biking on Richmond Street and Adelaide Street, the bike lanes permanent. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Bylaw, you have a motion to introduce the Planning and Housing Committee report?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. Good morning. That the report from meeting one of the Planning and Housing Committee listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Grimes, you have a motion to introduce the Tobago-York Committee Council report?
Yes, I do, and good morning, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting two of the Tobago-York Committee Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Pasternak, you have a motion to introduce the North York Committee Council report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. That the report from meeting two of the North York Committee Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration. I would only like to congratulate councillor Carol for putting her name forward as vice chair of North York Community Council.
Councillor McKelvey, you have a motion to introduce the Scarborough Council report?
Yes, Madam Speaker, that the report from meeting two of the Scarborough Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Perks, you have a motion to introduce the Toronto and East York Committee Council report?
Thank you, Speaker, and good morning. I move that the report from meeting two of the Toronto East York Community Council listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. Councillor Law, you have a motion to introduce the new business from city officials?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. I move that new business from city officials listed on the agenda of council be presented for consideration.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motions? Carrie, are there any declarations of interest? If you do, please indicate the committee, the item or motion number, and the nature of the interest, under request to question staff.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Out of an abundance of caution, I'd like to declare an interest on page four, CA 2.2, Appointment of Public Members to the Toronto Public Library Board. Although my wife is on medical leave, she is technically still an employee of Toronto Public Library.
Thank you. I will now call for petitions. Are there any petitions at this time? Councillor Wong-Tam?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have several petitions to present, and I would ask for indulgence, just because it takes a little time to read. First petition is signed by, in total, there's 13,000 signatures from residents from across the city, calling on city council to declare homelessness and housing, the housing crisis a state of emergency. Frontline housing workers are reporting a dramatic new wave of homelessness and underhousing. In 2018, there were approximately 181,000 individuals on Toronto's centralized waitlist. An applicant can expect to wait seven years or more for a bachelor unit, 12 years or more for a one-bedroom unit, and 10 years and longer for larger units. Toronto's housing crisis is so dire that disaster relief structures are being put into use, and they are responding to the emergency at all levels. The city has a capacity to shelter over 7,000 people, and yet we are very short from meeting the need. The Province's Ontario Emergency Response Plan defines an emergency as a situation or impending situation that constitutes a danger of major proportions that could result in serious harm to persons or substantial damage to property or other health risks. It goes on to say that these situations could threaten public safety, public health, the environment, property, and critical infrastructure, and economic stability. It is clear to us that Toronto's situation needs several of these criterias. The Government of Canada's Emergency and Management Act states that a government institution may not respond to provincial aid, may not respond to provincial aid emergency unless the government of the province requests assistance, or there's an agreement with the province that requires or permits assistance. It is imperative that we, as a municipal government, declare that homelessness is a humanitarian crisis, which we do not possess the resources to manage alone in Toronto. We call on the provincial government to assist us. The Ministry of Community Safety and Correctional Services is tasked with this response under the Emergency Response and Civil Protections Act. Should the province also find itself without the resources to adequately contain the crisis, a provincial emergency should be declared, so that resources of the federal government shall be brought to bear. That's 1,765 signatures. Following that, I have 1,206 petitions from across Toronto and the GTA, calling on the mayor and city council to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing, including 766 petitions signed by residents of Toronto Centre. I have 196 petitions from residents from Humber River Black Creek, Etobico North, and York Centre, as well as 959 petitions signed by residents living in Davenport, calling the mayor and city council to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing. In addition, I have 79 petitions from Scarborough Agent Court, residents calling on the mayor and city council to declare a state of homelessness, emergency on homelessness and housing. I have 127 petitions from residents living in Scarborough Rouge, Park, and Scarborough North, calling on the mayor and city council to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing. And I also continue to rise to submit 34 resident petitions from Scarborough North, calling on the mayor and city council to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing. In total, Madam Speaker, including the petitions to come, there will be 13,000 petitions submitted on this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Leighton?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise today to submit petitions from 1,191 individuals, residents of University of Rosedale, calling on the mayor and city council to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing. Briefly, the beginning of the petition reads, "I am your constituent, and I am writing to you today to urge you to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing in our city. Housing is a human right, and it is our responsibility to do everything we can to take care of the people of Toronto and ensure that every person is protected and safe." I'd like to thank the clerks for the...
Councillor Ainsley?
Good morning, Madam Speaker. I rise to submit a petition of 162 people from Scarborough-Gildwood and Eastern Scarborough, calling on the mayor and city council to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing in Toronto.
Councillor Cole?
Madam Chair, I rise to submit 377 petitions from Egerton-Lawrence, Ward Eight, calling on the mayor and city council to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing.
Councillor, please, no applause. Councillor Matlow?
Madam Speaker, I rise to submit 815 petitions from Toronto-St. Paul's, calling on the mayor and city council to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing, and 331 petitions from Don Valley West, calling on the mayor and city council to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing.
Thank you. Councillor Perks?
Thank you, Speaker. I rise to submit a petition with 947 signatures from Ward Four, Parkdale High Park. On the same matter as well, I would like to introduce a petition with 186 signatures from Etobico Centre, 392 signatures from Etobico Lakeshore, and 165 signatures from York-Southwestern.
Councillor Fillion?
Thank you. I rise to submit 181 petitions from Willadale, calling on the mayor and city council to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing.
Thank you. Councillor Cressy?
Thank you, Speaker. I rise to submit 596 petitions from residents of Spadina Fort York, calling us to urgently confront the homelessness emergency, and I would add into work to end chronic homelessness as well. Thank you.
Councillor Bradford?
Thank you. I rise to submit 688 petitions from Beaches-East York, calling on the mayor and city council to declare a state of emergency on homelessness and housing.
Thank you. Councillor Fletcher?
Thank you. Speaker, I rise to submit the names of 862 residents from Toronto-Danforth, who are very concerned about homelessness in our city. Would like us to place that on an emergency footing, as well as build more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the petitions, recorded vote?
And councillor Ainsley?
The motion to receive the petitions carries unanimously 24 in favor.
Councillor Bylaw, you had your name up there. Was that per reason?
Just wondering if we could time some items, or...
Well, we're not even there yet.
Okay.
Members, I will now review the order paper. We have one deferred items on the agenda, a new business, item CC 2.1 on 50 to 52 Finch Avenue East, official plan amendment, zoning bylaw amendment, and site plan applications, request for direction regarding a local planning appeal tribunal hearing. The mayor has designated the following items as his key matters for this meeting. The first key matter is item EX 1.1, headed implementing the Housing Now initiative. That item will be our first item of business today. The mayor's second key item is item IE 1.5, headed Richmond Street and Adelaide Street, cycle tracks. That item will be the second item of business today. There are a number of related items on the agenda that I also propose to be considered together. PH 1.2 on declaring Toronto homelessness and housing crisis a state of emergency with member motion 2.9 on expanding supportive housing in Toronto. Council will need to waive refer on the members' motion first. And item CC 2.5 with item CC 2.6, both items relate to 10 St. Mary's Street, 8185 St. Nicholas Street, and 710/718 Young Street, local planning appeal, tribunal appeal, request for direction. Notices and motions are scheduled to be dealt with at 2:00 p.m. tomorrow, only if the mayor's key matters have been completed. I propose that city council set a time for a closed session, if required, later in the meeting. The city clerk has noted the items that members wish to hold. I will now go through the items listed on the order paper to take additional holds. I will recognize requests to make matters urgent and time-specific after I go through the items for additional holds. Once the order paper has been approved by council, any change will need a two-thirds Councillor Bylaw, you, okay. On page three. Page four. Deputy Mayor Minnewong?
Yes, thank you. CA 2.2, Appointment of Public Members to the Toronto Public Library Board.
Okay. Page five. Councillor Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd just like a recorded vote on EY 2.2, which is the Request for Directions Report on 880-890 The Queen's Way, zoning bylaw minute application. Thank you. Sorry, which page? Five.
Which, I'm sorry, councillor Holliday, which?
It's EY 2.2, which is, just want a recorded vote.
Okay, you want to record a vote on that one, okay? So we'll, okay, so we'll vote on page five, EY 2.2, for 880 and 890 The Queen's Way, recorded vote.
Councillor Ford, page five.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning, everyone. I'd like to hold on page five, IE 1.3, Non-compensative Contract with Zimmer Air Service Incorporated for Control of the European Gypsy Moth Outbreak in 2019.
Count, Deputy Mayor Minnewong?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to hold IE 1.4, Metrolinks Egerton-Cross Town Light Rail Transit Traffic Regulation Amendments.
Councillor Minnewong just held the item I wanted to hold. Thanks.
Councillor Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would just like a recorded vote on NY 2.26, Application to Remove a Private Tree 168, Erskine Avenue.
Okay, on page six, NY 2.26, recorded vote. Councillor Holliday has asked for a recorded vote.
Councillor Thompson, please. Councillor Matlow. Councillor Kerry Giannis.
The item is adopted 20 to 4.
Pardon? You want to reopen? Okay, motion to reopen, on favor, Carrie. And to re, so you want another vote? Okay, let's vote again.
The item is adopted 21 to 3.
Councillor Grimes?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just going back to page five, EY 2.2, staffs asked me to move a technical amendment. I don't think it'll be contentious, so can you get rid of that? 2.3, I'm sorry.
Oh, so it's the item you upheld down for the 1197 The Queen's Way?
Staffs give me a technical amendment to move. I don't see it being contentious.
If we can put the technical amendment on the screen, this is on page five, EY 2.3, which is 1197 The Queen's Way in 80.
Councillor Perks can hold it.
You want to hold it? Under your name, councillor Grimes?
No, councillor Perks can hold it, no problem.
Okay. Okay. Page seven. If we can, yeah, page seven. Counselor Ford.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd just like a recorded vote on TE 2.6, application to remove a private tree 231 Longsmount Drive.
Okay, there's been a request on page seven, TE 2.6, for a recorded vote. Recorded vote.
Let me share the word count.
Counselor Matlow, please.
Counselor Carroll, please.
The item is adopted 22 to 2.
Page eight. Page not, Counselor Cressy, are you on page eight? Okay, Counselor Cressy.
Thank you, Speaker. I need to hold TE 2.79, please. That is, use of Nathanville Square for various events.
Thank you. Page nine. Okay. Counselor Layton, are you on page nine?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's just so that I could make a single-sentence statement that on item CC 2.3, I would like to thank the previous counselor for resolving this rather contentious issue. And one day, he can explain to all of us how he somehow got the community on board with a proposal that's taller than the original one. Somehow, the settlement was reached. Thank you.
I would not, I would not consider requests to make items urgent and time-specific. Counselor Layton.
That was the previous.
Oh, you, sorry. Counselor bylaw.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, I would like to request that the item that we had on Planning and Housing Committeeing 1, PH 1.2, be discussed right after the mayor's key items.
Okay. On favor, carried. Counsel, Counselor has asked that the item be do. Counsel, Counselor Perks?
For the sake of clarity, my understanding is that the mayor had two key items?
Yes.
And the member said "key item." So does that mean it goes between the two of them?
After, after the two key items.
After the two of them.
Yes.
Speaker, is the motion to make something time-specific debatable? I can't remember.
Yes.
Okay, in that case, I'd like to move to amend Counselor bylaw's motion, and instead move that we consider the two housing items together with the mayor's first key item. I appreciate that that needs the mayor's consent, but given that they all three relate to the urgent housing crisis in the city of Toronto, I believe we should deal with all three of them at the same time. So I'd move that.
Mayor? Are you?
No, I think it's better we should deal with it in the matter proposed, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Okay, so on Counselor's, Counselor bylaw's motion, on favor, carried. So your motion got passed. Counselor Wong Tam.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Counselor bylaw and Counselor Perks just did what I wanted to do. Well, more Counselor Perks. Thank you.
Counselor Cole.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the order here, but I have a motion to essentially deal with a motion from myself, seconded by Counselor Matlow, on the heritage preservation of Columbus Centre. But you asked for a hold-down for time-specific, and so therefore, what comes first?
Well, we do, we're doing the members' motions tomorrow, too.
Yes, so we wait until 2 o'clock? Those haven't been introduced yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not before us yet. Well, we're going to consider the members' motions tomorrow, too. We have to bring it to the floor.
When do I bring that to the floor?
Tomorrow.
But you asked if I wanted to hold anything down for time-specific.
No, but these are just, but these are not a members' motions. These are just on the agenda items. All those in favor of adopting the order paper and all items not held, recorded vote.
The motion to adopt the order paper carries unanimously 25 in favor.
Members, I, members of council, I want to stress the importance of preparing your motions in advance. The clerk-staff are here to help you prepare your motions. In particular, if you intend to move a motion during the release of holds, I will insist that your motion be prepared in advance and given to the clerk. If you do not have your motion ready, I will not recognize you. I'm also reminding members that you must state your motion first before you speak to it. Members, city council follows a routine for the processing and adding of any motions without notice during the meeting. Please remember that a motion without notice must include a reason for urgency. If you have an urgent motion without notice you wish to bring forward at this meeting, please give your motion to the city clerk-staff. They will prepare the necessary procedure motion for my review, along with your motion. The chair must agree the motion is urgent before you can seek leave to introduce it at this meeting. It will require 18 votes to add a motion without notice to the agenda during the meeting. Motions added to the agenda in this way are not subject to a vote to waive referral to a committee or agency. I will be reviewing all motions carefully, and will advise council after each recess which motions need a motion to add to the agenda. We will now go to the mayor's key item, which is EX 1.1. Okay, which is the Housing Now Initiative. Questions to staff? No questions? Okay. If you have questions, you need to put your name up on the screen. Counselor Carroll, questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. I have questions of staff that they may not be expecting because they're really about TCHC. But I spoke to staff earlier, I spoke to Mr. Gaddan's staff, and she thinks that they might be able to, in round ballpark numbers, be able to handle this. There's an issue around how many of these will be deeply affordable and how many will be affordable as these projects come about. Right now, in TCHC, our biggest social housing provider, we already have a range of people who are paying along the scale that's noted in this report. Some are deeply affordable, or in other words, RGI. We also have a significant number of people in TCHC circumstances now that are paying market value or somewhat below. Do we know that in a percentage?
Through the, through the speaker, my, TCHCs, 90% roughly of the units are RGI and 10% are market. And through the tenants first, we're going to try and shift that to make.
So that'd be about 8,000 or 9,000 units, somewhere in there? It would be the folks already paying market value?
Through the chair, that would be approximately 6,000 units.
Okay. And is the threshold at which they have to start paying market value, is it similar to the thresholds in this proposal for the new Housing Now projects? As soon as their income would represent, if market value would represent 30% and therefore at about 45,000 a year, they start to have to pay market?
Generally correct. Once their in, their income calculation exceeds 30% of market, they move to market rent.
Okay. So now, now what I know about this is only anecdotal because I know this from talking to tenants in my own project. But do we have stats on, do we have an understanding of how those, how those units are regarded? Once that tenant is paying market value, do we have the same standards about housed, underhoused? Do they, do they move to the back of the list in terms of transferring into larger units because they're playing, paying market value? Is our goal to get them out of TCHC? Or do we want them to stay there in TCHC?
Through the chair. Once a tenant receives market rent and has been paying market rent for one year, they're no longer considered for RGI and would need to go back to the waiting list.
Right. But, but, but say they're, now they're earning their $45,000 a year. They're paying their, it's slightly below market value, I believe, the, once the market rent in TCHC. Once they're paying that, do they have all the same set of considerations? I have a new child, can I have a larger unit? Are they considered in the same way as the RGI tenants?
The internal transfer policies are specific to the RGI units. It'd be up to TCHC to see if they could accommodate them in a unit that fits their needs.
So it's, it's safe to consider, in order to have the flexibility they need in their lives, these tenants, tenants occupying these 6,000 units, will want to, will want to apply for these new units because they would be regarded more fairly?
I think that would be yes if their income qualified them for affordable housing and the rent paid on the new unit was better than their current one, and they wanted to move. Then I would imagine that would be correct.
So what is the process? Once we build all these, say we have land office success here and we build 10,000 units, how does one qualify for these units? Is it a waiting list? Is it a lottery? Is it one-time lottery for all of them? Or is it a lottery for each project as it's completed? What's the plan? Is that my time going by, Madam Speaker?
Apologies. Through the, through the, through the chair. For each project, TCHC is recently using a random draw process to allow for equitable access to all people who apply.
And it's a new random draw for each project?
That's correct.
And how will they find out that the random draw is now taking place and that they are a person who ought to be getting into that random draw?
We work with TCHC to ensure an extensive advertisement process. So they notify all their tenants. We advertise on the city websites. Plus, there's advertisements put out in local media.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions, Madam Speaker.
Counselor Ford.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just have a, quite a brief question, more specific on the staffing model, the temporary staffing model. And I, and I can't find it now, but it makes mention somewhere in the report that we are looking at the housing secretariat to be, I guess, structured with the, with this table. But it also mentions about looking at using existing staff resources as well. Is that to complement these positions? Or is that over and above?
My apologies. Through the speaker. We're bringing in the housing secretariat just to kickstart these 11 projects. And then we're going to be looking at how we augment it with the Affordable Housing Office. Because in the fall, we'll also be bringing forward the house, our new 10-year housing plan for council's consideration. And then we're going to see how we leverage the housing secretariat and the Affordable Housing Office to drive not only the Housing Now program, but the other programs to reach our targets that council will be considering this fall through that housing plan.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Fletcher, questions?
Yes, thank you very much. On page 25 of the report, in the appendix 2, it lists all of the sites. And there's a couple of them, I think, that are almost right beside one another or very close. And that would be the Blurr, or Blurr-Kipling and Blurr-Islington aren't really close. They're down the road from one another. But the Don Mills ones are across the, very close to one another. And that, individually, the houses are there, but they add up to 2,377 units for that site at 805 and 77 Don Mills. Is there any thinking, or is there any possibility that some of those could be combined for an either deeper affordability or more affordable units? And can you hold my time while they get that sorted out, please? Thank you.
Through the chair, Counselor. Through all of the process for the offering of the 11 sites, we do intend to try to achieve deeper and greater affordability than what's in the program in front of you. But this is the base program that we believe is essential to going forward, recognizing the amount of resources that are being brought by the land and also by the city's fees and charges relief.
So it might be cost-efficient to put them out as singles or put them out as a double, depending?
So those evaluations will be done over the next number of months. And there may be instances where we could pair sites. But to be very clear, particularly for those groups that will be interested in this process, we're not putting 11 sites out. They will be put out in a way that there'll be multiple organizations that will have the opportunity to participate in this program.
And who is going to let those or do the RFP for those? Is it the housing secretariat or Create? Or has that been decided yet?
Well, as you'll see within the report through the chair, the answer with respect to this is that the housing secretariat is going to play a key role in ensuring all of that coordination happens, both through city planning and Create TO and other city departments.
But actually, the RFP would go out from?
Through the, through the speaker. The actual market process would be administered through Create TO, and the housing secretariat would be, would play a key role in ensuring that all parties come together on moving that forward.
And any decisions about grouping properties or any policy decisions? Where would they get made at the secretariat level? Or, I'm sorry, I can't see you, Deputy City Manager, because of Counselor Thompson. Speaker, I'm having a lot of my time eaten up here. As you can hear, no.
So through the, through the speaker, in the report, we do recommend certain delegated real estate matters, certain authorities be delegated to the DCM and the CFO and the Create TO, Create TO Board on certain real estate matters in order to expedite the process. But anything related to the Affordable Housing Program would be the housing secretariat.
So just looking at the page, there's four of the sites that make up almost 6,000 of the 10,000 some units. And then there's some of these sites that are quite small. I know there's an appetite to have a number, a range of providers, not just large housing developers, but other providers, without giving instructions. Would your thinking be that some of those tiny sites, Mr. Gadden, would be useful for a co-op or a nonprofit? For 70, 70 units? That's not a Tridel, let's say.
Through the chair, there are a number of the sites that do lend themselves towards nonprofit housing development. And certainly, the report speaks to enhancing the ability of the nonprofit housing sector to participate in this program. So we would expect to see their involvement, particularly in those locations where they also demonstrate the capacity to actually deliver the program.
And can somebody tell me how many housing, rental housing units have been lost because of Airbnb? That number was at the committee the other day. Staff?
Through the speaker, I don't have, I don't have that information. I can.
Do we, do we have an answer? I put your time on hold, Counselor Fletcher.
Thank you so much. I saw that, appreciate that.
No, through the speaker. I'm sorry, we'll have to get that information. We don't have it at the moment. My apologies.
Okay, so I come back up again, then? How will we do that? How will we do that?
Well, you've got thirty seconds.
Well, but I don't have the answer yet.
No, I know, so when they get the answer?
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Cressy, questions?
Thank you, Speaker. I'll begin directing my questions to Paul Raftis from SSHA. What is the current waiting list for supportive housing in the city of Toronto?
Through the Speaker, at the moment, it is approximately fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. And how many units do we currently have funded and scheduled to be built in this city over the next coming years?
Through the Chair, we're currently supporting ninety-seven hundred units.
No, we're currently supporting, but how many units do we have funded to be built, new units to be constructed in the coming years?
Through the Chair, we don't have any funded and built, we're, we are working to help, to assist people through the Homes for Good program at the moment.
Okay. To the, to Mr. Gaddan, on the proposal, does this proposal in front of us require the provision of any supportive housing units within the thirty-seven hundred affordable?
There's no requirement with respect to supportive housing.
All right, thank you. The delivery agent for the affordable housing units that have been identified in this, the thirty-seven hundred, is there any requirement, and Mr. Gaddan, I'll direct this to you, is there any requirement in this report that any or all of these would be owned and operated by the nonprofit and co-op sector?
Through the Chair, no, there is not a requirement that it be owned by, operated by the nonprofit sector.
Is, is there any benefit to the nonprofit sector being able to own and operate units in the city? By owning and operating, in addition to building capacity, does that provide financial benefit to them to continue to seek, to leverage that to build more housing?
Through the Chair, absolutely, and it's one of the reasons why there's a capacity building fund in the report to support nonprofit participation in the Housing Now program.
Okay, thank you. With respect to the purpose-built, Mr. Gaddan, I will direct these to yourself unless you see fit, otherwise, this, the proposal in front of us calls for how many purpose-built market rental units?
So in the chart, through the Chair and appendix, you'll see that there's seven thousand two hundred and fifty-eight, purpose-built rental, and then fifty percent of those are to be affordable and the other fifty percent would be market rental.
And so forgive me for not being as quick on the math uptake here, so how many units are purpose-built market rental?
Three thousand six hundred and twenty-nine.
Three thousand six hundred and twenty-nine. So with respect to those in particular, since the provincial government recently eliminated the requirement for rent control on purpose-built, new purpose-built rental units, does this proposal in front of us require any form of tenant protections on rent control for the city-owned land which will be turned into purpose-built rental?
In its current form, the Ontario legislation is what would apply.
I, perhaps I can direct this to, is there the capacity in this proposal for us to direct the, the applicants to include tenant protections in their proposals? Do we have the capacity to do that?
Through the Chair, yes, we do, and it's certainly a consideration that we could put into reviewing the proposals with respect to the amount of, or the proposed tenant protection that they would provide.
Okay, so we could put that into the proposal, but the current proposal does not include that direction related to tenant protection on the purpose-built market rental?
Through the Chair, we could put it in.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that, but council can decide how they want to treat this matter.
Thank you very much. And one final question, I'm so sorry to keep you on the hot seat, I know you were recently off of flu, so I appreciate it. The number and the quality, and by quality I mean the level of affordability, both the quantity and the quality, by that I mean the level of affordability for affordable housing, is there the potential for us to increase both of those in this proposal?
Through the Chair, through the Housing Now initiative and the bidding process, we're, see it as an opportunity to award projects to those groups that do better, this is the base program in front of you. We're quite concerned, I will say, that any layering on of additional requirements will essentially chill the bidding process and result in it not being successful.
Does, so, does the proposal and the call for proposals include any metrics that state that those proposals that have increased numbers of affordable units and the deepening of affordability of those units will be ranked higher? Does the current proposal assess those on a higher matrix, if that's an objective?
The report in front of you is a report to implement the program, the detailed design associated with this is yet to be done, and so we'll build those and have the capacity and ability to build those metrics in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bradford.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This would be to Executive Director of Affordable Housing. I appreciate that we're coming close to the affordability with the ninety-nine-year period. I know our typical practice through programs and policy is more closer to twenty or forty-nine years. How did we arrive at ninety-nine? How were we able to do that?
Through the Chair, the instructions that we received from council in December included maintaining the sites in public ownership. In discussions with Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation and the financing that they would have available for projects like Housing Now, they requested that we have a ninety-nine-year term.
Great. I want to talk a little bit about the market offering piece and how we're setting up the criteria for that. Can the evaluation framework account for applicants that are going beyond the minimums and providing different weight on the criteria towards affordability, in particular, deep affordability?
Through the Chair, absolutely they can.
Is that something that, you know, as we go through the next step, you guys would consider setting up that way?
Through the Chair, absolutely. I think you can understand that all of the different staff and departments and the individuals at Create TO and Create TO as an organization understand we have an affordability housing crisis in this city and we're looking to respond to that. That's what this proposal, that's the guts and the essential pieces of this, which is essentially to try to achieve as much affordable housing as possible. We've put in front of you what we believe is a proposal that is workable. Would we like to achieve better? Absolutely, and we would expect and hope that the delivery process can do that.
Should, thank you, should we add perhaps a piece to the waiting that responds to proponents, whether they're, you know, co-op proponent partners or nonprofit or private sector, that actually provides some weighting towards those who have successfully delivered affordable housing projects in the city before? Is that something that would be reflected in the, the criteria?
Through the Chair, absolutely that will be reflected in the criteria.
Okay. And in your experience, I know Infrastructure Ontario, different, different partners had had bidding processes to deliver affordable housing across the city. In your experience, do you expect or anticipate that some of the applications or bids will be coming in above and beyond minimum requirements or would you anticipate that people will just be landing on, on the minimums?
Through the Chair, I think we'll see a full range of proposals. Of course, we know that the nonprofit housing sector has an extreme interest in this initiative and in creating and increasing the stock of nonprofit housing, and so we would expect and hope to see some of those proposals in this process and also that they would be successful.
Okay, thank you. Page sixteen, we talk about TGS, Toronto Green Standards, for the projects, and I'm not sure who, if this is you or if this is someone else, but we outline that the projects are expected to meet the energy component of the Toronto Green Standards Tier Two requirements. Would it, would it be safe to say we're expecting them to meet all of the TGS Tier Two standards?
Through the Chair, yes, through the development approval process, they would be subject to Tier One, and then through this program, we are making them subject to Tier Two, so it's the highest standard that the city would require.
Right. Sorry, missed a note on, on the average market rent piece, this is probably back to you. Average market rent, as I read the report, it's determined, this is a Toronto average that we're looking at as opposed to neighborhood-specific?
Through the Chair, yes, the average we're using is based on the official plan definition.
Would we, is there an opportunity to achieve deeper affordability or perhaps rents more reflective of the specific areas if we looked at a neighborhood average? Has that been done or is it possible?
Through the Chair, it is possible, but I would suggest that, given that these are transit-rich locations, that the neighborhood amounts may actually be higher than what the average are.
Okay. And then one final question, this is about Ontario Building Code and accessibility, and so I'm not sure who, who would speak to this, but my understanding is the Ontario Building Code with respect to accessibility requirements for tenants doesn't necessarily address all of the challenges that some of our tenants will face. We've got twenty percent of the units that we're, we're keying up to be accessible, so is that accessible with respect to the Ontario Building Code or do you anticipate we'll be preparing a separate document that would outline requirements for people with accessibility challenges beyond just mobility?
Thank you.
Through the Chair, certainly they would be subject to the Ontario Building Code. In addition, if there are proponents that include housing across the full spectrum of need, that we would certainly consider through the business of, of securing the, the actual proposals, we would look at the accessible requirements in, in relation to the particular client need that would be associated with those specific proposals.
Thank you. Counselor Gillian?
You, questions of the Chief Planner? I understand the need to expedite the development of these sites. Is it the intention to skip any steps in the planning process?
Through the Speaker, no, the, the initiative is, as outlined in the report, is different in that the city will initiate zoning changes itself. In the pre-procurement stage of the process, where we will be able to define the, the zoning permission on the site, and then those pre-zone sites will go out for procurement. So to that extent, the city will be in the driver's seat and council will make separate decisions on the zoning of those properties. Later, after procurement, winners of those, of those bids will perfect those applications and if they need to, go to, go to the Committee of Adjustment, and certainly they will also be subject to the site plan approval process. So in every respect, we'll be following the city's planning process, but we'll certainly be keeping our eye on this in terms of moving as swiftly as we can and as consistently as we can.
And in the perfecting of those applications, would the people who buy them have the opportunity to seek higher density or will that be said at the time they, we reach an agreement with them?
Through the, through the Speaker, anyone would be entitled to seek any additional height or density, but I would think through the procurement process, we're going to be very clear about what we accept as, as appropriate, contextually appropriate development on these sites, taking into account all of the requirements in the city's official plan. So I'm not anticipating that we'll be getting into a second round, seeking additional height and density.
So are, is it the intention or could we put in provisions to prevent that? If it's something we don't want to happen or we wouldn't share in any benefits from that, would we want to, you know, you know, stratify the site or, or some such measure to ensure that, that developer doesn't buy it, then go for increased density and, and we get no more affordable housing?
It's, it's something that council has done on occasion in the past, through, certainly through the business terms of any procurement, those parameters can be negotiated. To date, we have not anticipated taking that extra step through, through the thinking that we've done to date on, on the proposal.
So at the moment, we don't foresee any concrete steps that the city would take to make sure that at the time they turn the property over to a private entity, that that private entity has to stick with the densities that council has approved?
Again, other, through the Speaker, other than terms that we may include in any business terms through the procurement of these sites, we have not, we have not performed any specific steps to date, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Torry?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My first couple of questions are to the, I think to the Chief Planner. First of all, I would like to know, and if you could let members of council know, how we are going to expedite these particular parcels of land and the proposals that come forward in respect of them while still doing our due diligence? In other words, how are we going to make these move through the system as quickly as possible?
Through the Speaker, the, the report anticipates pre-zoning the sites. So first of all, and very importantly, putting in place the zoning bylaw is necessary to give certainty to the proponents, is a really essential step in expediting the approval process. The proponents will know with a great level of certainty what they will be able to construct, and in that sense, you condense the period of negotiation. On the other hand, we are taking these through the normal planning process and will be out consulting with communities, with local councilors to develop the zoning parameters for these sites. So we, as, as we've conceived in the report, want to strike that appropriate balance between making sure that we've achieved all the goals in the official plan, the planning goals that council would normally consider, while at the same time, with dedicated staff, moving these through pre-zoning as quickly as we can.
That was excellent because you gave me a two-for-one answer because I wanted to make sure we could reassure the public that there will be even, notwithstanding our expedition of these things, no diminished opportunity for people in the communities to come and be part of the consultative process for these particular parcels of land.
Yes, I agree with that and that's certainly the line that we typically try to stay on.
Okay, thank you. These questions probably go to somebody from the Affordable Housing Office, maybe Mr. Gaddan, but whoever seems most appropriate. I just wondered if you could give the members of council and the public a general sense of the marketplace in, in this context, you know, the marketplace meaning the nonprofit community and others, with respect to this layering on that was referred to earlier on and, you know, sort of how far we can go without impairing what is meant to be a very open process that's meant to encourage what I would call a robust response, so it gives us an array of proposals to respond to, to, to select from, and, and just a little bit of a sense of the marketplace in that regard, you know, as to how, sort of how far you can go to be prescriptive without sort of causing us problems in terms of the response rate that we want to get for these parcels.
Through the Chair, Mr. Mayor, we have had at the city twenty years of experience in the development of affordable housing, both nonprofit and private sector organizations, and even today, we have nonprofit and private sector organizations building affordable housing for us, and generally, those have been under federal provincial programs. This particular initiative is a kind of, if you will, a made-in-Toronto approach, and we believe that we need sufficient flexibility to ensure that the proposals can come back to us because this is four point two billion dollars with a construction activity, thirteen thousand jobs involved over the course of the construction of these buildings, and so we, I believe, think we need everybody in the boat, if you will, rowing forward on this initiative for it to be successful. So there's no one organization or no one sector that actually is capable of delivering this entire initiative and particularly if this is the beginning of the Housing Now program, we're looking to scale it up even further. So the report, I, we believe, strikes the right balance around the amount of flexibility staff needs to deliver the program in a timely way and also to provide the approval so that we can actually get shovels in the ground.
Just one more question to you as well, through you, Madam Speaker, to Mr. Gaddan. You were asked earlier on about the, about, about this kind of layering on and said that we obviously didn't yet have the actual documents that would issue and effect formally the proposals, the request for proposals on these pieces of land. You weren't, in saying, in response to one particular request that was being made of you, rejecting the notion of us saying, for example, that we would give favorable consideration to proposals that had more affordable housing or any one of a number of the different examples that have been discussed. You're not ruling out that we might say that, you're simply saying as of this moment, I guess in a way, trying to be, take a holistic approach to making sure the overall process is successful, that that is something that could form a part of the, of the terms of the proposals, request for proposals that are put out there?
Mr. Mayor, through the Chair, that's correct. We took the principles that council gave us that were adopted in December, we applied them to this report within the space of four weeks, and all of the team working on this initiative are interested in achieving as much affordable, as supportive, transitional, as much housing as possible for those people that are in the- the greatest need in the city.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Counselor Pasternak.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to Staff. Normally, in the course of development applications, when you add density, it puts pressure on local infrastructure. This is, this case is a little unusual. Will, who will be responsible for infrastructure, the cost of infrastructure upgrades, whether it be stormwater, sewage, recreational?
Through the Speaker, as is the case with any development applications, the, all of the servicing requirements of each site will be evaluated. They will, of course, be in various states of readiness for development. So our various divisions involved in that process will review what is necessary. In some cases, in many cases, development, the development cost related to the infrastructure is on the developer. So these developments have to include the capacity to improve that infrastructure. In some cases, rarer cases, the infrastructure includes improvements, the infrastructure needed includes improvements to regional infrastructure. And in that case, the city might contribute through a decent rebate.
So, in some cases, the private sector or leasing will be taking up the cost of those infrastructure improvements? Other cases, it might be cost shared? Is that...
Generally speaking, the cost will be on the development.
Yeah. When it comes to the units themselves, the rental units, and I'm not sure whether this goes to Mr. Gaddin or the Chief Planner, who owns title to those units over this period?
Through the Chair, the proposal calls for the land to be leased for 99 years on the rental units, so the title would be owned by the city.
So the city would be the owner of these units?
The city retains title, so within 99 years, the land and the housing would revert to the city. During the period of the lease, essentially, it's, the leaseholder would be either the nonprofit or private sector group.
Now, back to the, okay, thank you. So, the city is the title holder of these units?
That's correct.
When it comes to commuter parking, the Chief Planner, I guess you've seen the motion that came up through Executive. Are you comfortable with the wording of that motion?
The motion that Executive passed was for us to consider implications on commuter parking. We're certainly, as I indicated at Executive Committee, we would prioritize the development of the affordable housing over the production of commuter parking. The motion was to consider it through the procurement process, and we will consider it. But Council is well aware of the city's policies, where we are trying to reduce congestion. One of the best ways to do that is to put less vehicles on the road, and I would think that we'll want to induce other ways for people to get to these transit stations rather than using parking in commuter parking lots.
Well, it seems that you've made up your mind. I bring to your attention a positive staff report for St. Lawrence Market North redevelopment, where there was a $15 million investment in parking in that $91 million development. Now, I realize you weren't the Chief Planner back then, but is there a double standard where tens of millions go into commuter parking in the downtown major infrastructure projects, but it's sort of looked down upon in the inner suburbs?
I would say, through the Speaker, generally, we're, through the official plan, we are trying to reduce commuter parking across the city. The idea of reducing vehicular travel is a consistent policy approach across the city. We all look at opportunities and the demand, the travel demand management that's associated with every development. So in the case of the market, there may have been an ongoing need for some parking related to the market and the tourism that goes on in the market area.
I have very little time left. Very quickly, just north of the 50 Wilson Heights site, there's 55 acres of vacant Toronto land, the Allen District Plan. The only thing there is the Shepherd West subway station. Is there any reason why that site was avoided, a site we've been trying to kickstart for many years? And pick a site where there's just going to be nothing but confrontation over the next few years as commuters object to the proposal?
Sorry, Madam Speaker, we're just getting you an answer.
Okay, that's your last question. Now, we'll wait for the answer.
Through the Speaker, revised, that that site wasn't available right now to be part of this tranche. It certainly would be considered in future opportunities to realize housing through this program.
Thank you. Counselor McKelvey?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My questions pertain to the RFP process. Is it thought that all 11 properties will go out for bid at once, or will this be a staged gated approach?
Thank you for the question, through the Chair. They would go through a staged approach.
And so, is there the possibility for learning from one RFP to the next, and changing of the criteria, for example, for awarding?
Through the Chair, definitely, as we go through the process and learn things, and we're in an environment of continuously improving things, there is opportunities to tweak.
Is this a unique approach for the city to be using for development of properties?
I'm sorry?
Is this unique, in the first time the city has done such an approach for development of properties?
In this particular way, yes, absolutely.
It's interesting that you have a million dollars that is set aside to develop a nonprofit housing capacity fund. I was wondering if you could give some examples of what that sort of fund could be used to, to encourage the nonprofit sector to bid in this process?
Through the Chair, the fund is intended to supplement also what Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation makes available through a project development fund, but in particular, given this initiative to build capacity generally within the nonprofit housing sector, and also support them potentially in any of the particular bids as well. I will note as well, Council has received a number of letters and pieces of correspondence from nonprofit housing organizations that have actually commented and supported that particular part of the initiative.
And how will you be advertising this opportunity to the nonprofit sector? Because they may not, for example, use Bidingo or regular tools regularly.
Through the Chair, we're already in communication with some of the sector organizations, and we'll be hosting a number of open houses for them to discuss the program. And also, actually, because we're still in the design of the RFP process, or the offering process, to also consider ideas that they may have.
Is there anything, the way this is set up, that would preclude TCHC from submitting proposals to this process?
Through the Chair, absolutely not.
And then, my last question, for the awarding of these, I guess, I don't know what the proper word is, if it's a contract or development, the ability to build and develop, I'm not sure the exact wording of that. I assume you're going to have mandatory requirements, but then, will there also be consideration? How will you consider, like, value added? Like, for example, employing local youth in construction, or increasing the number of accessible units, et cetera? Like, how do you see waiting out mandatory versus value add through this process?
Through the Chair, we have in our current evaluation process additional points that would be awarded to organizations that provided additional affordability. In the past, it's also resulted where there's been additional length of affordability. In this case, it's 99 years. So if someone came in and said, "Well, we're prepared to do 40 years of affordability," we'd say, "Thank you, but no thanks, it's 99 years."
And so, you could have as a value add, for example, accessibility or local youth employment as things that you could get additional points for?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Counselor Perks?
Thank you. To the, I'm not sure who will answer it. I'm looking at the recommendations that we're actually being asked to vote on here. Recommendation nine says there will be a maximum of one-third ownership homes within any, you know, any bid we'll look at. Now, I've heard that we're only doing these where we retain the land, and I'm confused. How does someone wind up owning a home on land that we own?
Through the Chair, in the details of the report, you will see that where condominium ownership is contemplated, that we would sell the land.
Oh, so we will be considering selling up to a third of the land on any of these sites for condominium?
Exactly.
Okay. In addition, recommendation number 21 says that there would be a system of dispersing proceeds from the sale or lease. So in some other circumstances, does that apply only to the one-third where we sell for condominium, or is there other contemplation of sale?
No.
No?
Let me correct myself. In a number of the instances, there may also be retail or commercial uses, so it may apply there.
So, just to really nail that down, in recommendation 25, it says that you, the market offering process will give a priority to retaining public ownership of lands. Nowhere in any recommendation that I can find does it say that there must be retention, even for the rental units of public lands. Have I missed something in the recommendations?
Counselor Perks, through the Chair, we have used the language that was approved at Council in December, in terms of the directions and the principles, but it is the intention to achieve affordable rental and market rental on leased lands.
I understand that that's the intention.
Yes.
But nowhere in here does it say that no bid will be accepted if the rental land does not stay as 99 years. Rather, it says that priority will be given. I'm reading that correctly?
You're reading it correctly.
So, just to summarize, on any of the bids, up to one-third of the land could be sold off for condominium, and there is no guarantee that if all the bids come back and for the remaining two-thirds of the land they want to purchase, we're merely giving a priority. We're not saying they must give us a 99-year lease.
I think what I'm suggesting to you, Counselor, is that we intend to make it a must, and we would not accept that bid if it does not include leased land.
So, if we want to make sure that our intentions are met, we would have to amend these regulations to say so. Because currently, they say, "Give a priority to, not must be done." Is that correct?
Through the Chair, you may wish to, but the staff's intention is that it would be a requirement.
I understand that that's your intention, but your intentions are determined by what directions we give you. Is there a direction here that the land must remain in public ownership on the rental portion?
Current recommendation does not say that.
Counselor Layton?
Madam Speaker, if I could have my position held, I had a question of the CFO, I believe she's trying to get that, track that answer down for me, that I was going to ask. My apologies.
Okay, I'll hold it down. Counselor Wong Tan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Following up on Counselor Perks's question, one-third condominium ownership, obviously, that will be transferred into the hands of private ownership. One-third of the assorted lands will be market-based rents. Is the intention for those lands to be transferred into the hands of private landlords?
The one-third affordable, through the Chair, will be dependent upon who wins in the bidding process, whether it's private or nonprofit.
And the one-third that's market rent?
That's correct.
That is, so it could be that the second one-third could also be in the hands of private ownership, is that correct? The ones that are purpose-built market rentals?
Through the Chair, that's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
It depends on the bidding process.
Yes, thank you. And because the language of the report encourages nonprofit and co-op sector involvement, but not a requirement, but I hear that in your answer to Counselor Perks's question, is that your intention is to change the language in the procurement? Is that correct? Because how do we ensure that nonprofit sector co-op housing will participate in the bid process?
In response, through the Chair, I've not indicated that we're going to change the procurement process. The procurement process will be open to both private and nonprofit organizations. What we're looking at here is achieving the results of getting the housing built and it being made affordable for the residents that we're looking to house for, essentially, over a 99-year term. Who can do that will be dependent on who comes in and bids. I can't require the nonprofit housing sector to come in and bid on a site. That will be a decision that they'll have to make, and they'll have to make a business case that they can achieve that and get it done.
But this is getting to the root of the discussion right now, is that Council can require, through the procurement offering process, that nonprofit sector, nonprofit housing sector, cooperative sector is required to be a part of any developer's bid to obtain the lands. You're saying that we can't do it, because, for what reason? We're saying that we could amend the report to specifically get that result.
Through the Chair, in answer to your question, mandating a particular thing like that may indeed reduce the competitiveness of this process and result in bids not being made.
Is the outcome to, is the outcome to ensure that we get a for-profit condominium developer to help build the sites out? Or is the objective of the report to build as many affordable housing units as possible so we can actually address the housing crisis before us?
Through the Chair, the objective of the report is that there can be a business plan presented by an organization, whether it be nonprofit or private, on each of these sites that's achievable, regardless of whether nonprofit or private.
And then, how likely...
And within that process, to achieve as much affordable housing as possible. So we have put a cap on the maximum number of condominium units.
So then, how likely is it that the nonprofit sector, by way of even putting a million dollars aside to try to help them build their capacity, how likely is it that they're going to come in and compete competitively with the for-profit, well-financed development sector? If we don't make it a requirement of their participation in the bid process?
Through the Chair, with respect, there are a number of sites here, and there are smaller sites that relate to the capacity of the nonprofit sector to actually develop and deliver those projects that they likely will come in on. Some of the other sites may be beyond their capacity.
So that means that not every single site will have affordable units, and deeply affordable units, if they are to be, if those smaller sites, the least desirable sites, the least valuable sites are going to be left for the nonprofit sector to compete for? The more profitable sites, the more desirable locations, the ones where we can actually get more density on there, will be left for the condominium for-profit developer? Is that the scenario that we're setting up by way of this report?
Through the Chair, I don't believe so. There's a number of organizations that currently are in the nonprofit space that work very successfully with the private sector, and I expect that they will be involved, as they were in the West Donlands, as an example, to provide services to those residents that are in the affordable units.
The shelter component of ODSB, I believe, is about $437, just for those who are on the ODSB recipient. How many of these units that we're proposing to build can someone on ODSB afford to rent?
Through the Chair, the purpose of this report is to provide housing that's affordable within a range of incomes and occupations. This is not, this is not a program that is designed to provide deeply affordable housing at the outset. Organizations that come in and bid on this process that might have access and be able to achieve greater deep and affordable housing are more than welcome to apply, and we would actually provide greater points to those organizations that bring those sorts of benefits.
Thank you. Counselor Layton?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm going to ask a question of Mr. Gaddin, and then the CFO, and then I'll be back to Mr. Gaddin again, just to, so that you're aware when you need to get up and sit down. Is it safe to say, Mr. Gaddin, that the reason why we're not recommending a larger investment from the city, from cash, is that we don't have the capital available in our capital budget to build this housing ourselves? We're relying on the private sector to bring that capital. Is that fair to say?
Through the Chair, other jurisdictions, and I'll quote, for instance, in British Columbia, where they have a $1.2 billion affordable housing fund, and the city of Vancouver has a $2 billion endowment fund, have made decisions that are different than the decisions that have been made in Ontario, or even the city of Toronto. So I'm operating, and the whole program is designed around leveraging resources we have, other than going into the city's capital program.
Other than going into the city's capital program... Other than going into the city's capital program, because, to be honest, the space doesn't exist within the city's capital program for an investment of this kind, unless it doesn't count towards that ceiling. And so I'd like to ask the CFO, can you explain how we determine what refundable debt is versus just regular debt?
Through the chair, refundable debt is debt that in actual fact has a revenue stream to offset the debt service costs over the period of time that the debt is outstanding. Regular debt is funded, the debt service cost pertaining to regular debt is funded from the tax base.
So if we have a revenue stream to offset the debt servicing costs, it's deemed refundable debt. Now, does refundable debt count towards our debt ceiling as of 2019?
As of, through the chair, as of 2019, debt pertaining, or debt that is considered refundable debt does not get included in our 15% debt ceiling.
So just to confirm, we could take on additional debt above our debt ceiling if we identify a revenue source from that debt?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask some questions, growing on Counselor Bradford's question. Which number is being used from the CMHC average to determine what they need to get 80%, 20% under in this program? Is it the citywide average? Is it the central average, the east average, north average? Is it the GTA? I just need to know, because there's line items on the CMHC website that I just want to make clear.
Through the chair, CMHC, Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation, surveys the city every October in 17 different zones. The official plan has one average for the entire city, so we are using the one average for the entire city by bedroom size. So one, two, three, four bedrooms.
So that doesn't include the GTA region? We have a sub-zone that is just adding together central, east, west, and north and averaging those?
That's correct.
So there's, and yet another tranche. So the neighborhoods do have zones, though, and we know which neighborhoods that we've identified these projects are in, correct?
Sure, that's correct.
Have we compared what the average rents are in those zones with the city average? And have we determined how much of a reduction are we actually going to see from the average within that neighborhood and what will be built in that neighborhood?
Through the chair, we've not actually undertaken that exercise, at the same time recognizing that you need a rent in order to pay for what you've built. And so in that regard, we think the city average is an acceptable standard, and if council wishes to revisit that, it's within the official plan.
But is there a mechanism in the report as presented to say that hypothetically, if the rent in the neighborhood, if the neighborhood CMHC average was already 80% of the city average, could we demand that we go deeper?
Through the chair, again, you need the rent in order to construct the building. And so, yes, you could look to achieve deeper affordability, but at the end of the day, you have to pay for the construction of the building. And so, Counselor, I don't want to be argumentative about it. We are happy to go back and do a sensitivity analysis based on the zones in which they all occur, but at the end of the day, you still need a rent that is going to cover the cost to actually construct and operate these buildings.
You do, and since we're handing it over to the private sector, you also need a rent that's going to generate profit for them, correct? One would think.
Through the chair, I, again, I don't want to be argumentative, but we are not handing it over to the private sector. This is a bidding process, and we'll determine who gets it through that process.
Thank you. Counselor Ainsley.
Thank you. Mr. Gaddan, sorry, so just some clarification. So in the plan, we define affordable housing as 80% of the average market rent, as outlined by CMHC, correct?
That's correct.
So the, which is $1,098?
Across one, two, and three bedrooms.
Yes.
So the one bedroom's a bit less and the three bedroom's a little higher.
And so then it also stipulates 30% of a person's income should be going towards rent, correct? That's the, kind of the maximum threshold?
That's correct.
Which works out to about $549 a month?
That's correct.
Okay, and so then from there, I'm trying to understand, so we have roughly 180,000 people on rent-to-year income across the city. So in these projects, how many people that earn rent-to-year income do you anticipate would be able to afford units in these 11 projects?
Through the chair, so as part of the bidding process, we're anticipating organizations to come forward and participate in this program that have the ability to bring rent supplements and other benefits. We also don't know going forward what the federal national housing benefit will provide, so that could be built into this program as well to achieve rents that are lower than these. But those are income supports, and we believe that this program delivers you a base initiative that will get you 10,000 housing units, 3,700 of them that are affordable, and then there's income support programs that can be layered into that.
Right, so 20?
There's a point where your housing program also can only, it reaches a point where it can only deliver so much affordability, and then you need other programs, income support programs, housing benefits, housing allowances, rent supplements, that then bring the rents lower. And we're anticipating that organizations that participate in this program will help do that, and also that the governments may, in the course of the next 99 years, step up and introduce programs to help people that are in deep poverty.
Okay, but sorry, I'm just trying to understand as far as we go forward with these 11 projects, so we don't have an absolute target of people that we're going to, that would be able to afford it from a rent-to-year income?
Through the chair, if the city of Toronto wants to adopt and create a rent-to-year-income program and layer it into this and pay the hundreds of millions of dollars to do that, move the motion.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Lintern, I just wanted to ask, so these 11 projects, I touched on it at executive committee around, there's the planning process and the zoning and that, so these 11 projects, there's also some concern around public parking, and I'm sure some residents will have issues. Have we looked at anything about a design project for, individually for each of these projects, or how we're incorporating or going to get landscape architects, maybe leading design landscape architects involved in each project so they're a little more palatable to each neighborhood where they're going?
Through the speaker, design, of course, is a significant policy consideration in the city's official plan, high-quality design, no matter who lives there. And we've got an increasingly sophisticated repertoire when it comes to our understanding of how to build good, high-quality housing for communities and for people. The social, the Housing Office has design standards, and the city has design standards, and it has guidelines for vertical communities, and we have tools at our disposal, including the Design Review Panel. So we will very much be mindful of the city's requirements to impose on these developments in much the same way that we would on anyone else.
So you don't think it'd be prudent to stipulate that we have a design competition for each one of these projects?
I think in the spirit of the principles, in the spirit of the principles that City Council has already adopted, I am not concerned with needing any additional instruction from City Council about keeping our eye on high-quality design.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Grimes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to follow up, I guess, with Mr. Lintern, on my friend Counselor Passon's question on the infrastructure. I have a lot of faith in Toronto Water and infrastructure there, but back to the recreation. And I got a chance to be briefed by staff on the Six Points Interchange. Counselor Fletcher did point out that two of the sites, the Six Point Interchange, Bluer-Nislington, very close together, Dundas Street being a growth, one of the growth areas. What point do we, and I know there's a recreation community center planned for that area, but what point does that all come together in these high-growth areas? So I think we're going to achieve the mayor's target, probably over 30% of affordable there, but how do we make sure that there's things at the bottom of these tall buildings for the youth and the seniors? And how does that all come together? Where does that come together with staff?
Through the speaker, in a couple of ways. Firstly, the area, as you know, has a secondary plan that looks at the overall growth and puts down a planning framework. Once that intersection is rebuilt, a number of sites will be available for redevelopment. In, on each site and in and around that area, we've got a staff team already in place, have been working for several years, actually, on how that area will reemerge as, with more of an urban look and feel, with bike lanes and walkable streets and community parks, and, as you noted, new recreation facilities. So all of that is part of the mix. That's happening at a neighborhood scale. At the scale of each and every development that comes through this program, we'll be looking for opportunities to build in any community requirements, certainly at grade retail, but any other community requirements that come through the circulation process with all the divisions. So we look for and coordinate those opportunities on each and every, on each and every site.
So is that new, Greg? So I know you were around with, Humber Bay Shores out, and they're screaming now that we didn't put the infrastructure in. I know Counselor Nunzietta, she had a community center, was on the books forever, finally got open a couple of years ago.
Many years.
Years. But how do we get that onto the books at an early stage that staff see this growth's going to happen? I'm not just talking about Six Points. Wherever it's going to be, there's growth coming. We project that this growth is going to be there. We don't be waiting for these community centers. We need them right away. But is that planning's going to lead the charge on that?
Yes, and in fact, with council's adoption of large planning frameworks last year, you can see the evidence of council looking at growth plans, whether it be the downtown, North York Center, Scarborough Center, Tobico Center, Humber Bay Shores, Young and Eglington, putting in place the planning frameworks, but also the infrastructure strategies that are required to support that growth. So we know, for example, if you've got 50,000 people coming into an area, how many rec. centers, how many daycares, the size of the pipes, the size of the roads, the transit connections, all of those things have to be planned out in advance in a general way, get the divisions on side with putting them in their capital budgets over the long term as those areas build out. So as we plan out a Tobico Center, we're very much undertaking that process and coordinating it with all the departments. And at the end of the day, we have the use of planning tools, whether it be Section 37 or holding bylaws, to make sure that we've timed and are better at, because I grant you, some areas have gotten ahead of the infrastructure, but we have to be better at aligning the growth with the provision of infrastructure, and it's very much in our minds as we plan out these sites in a Tobico Center.
So what's being planned for Six Points, I'll go back to that one, all that growth that can happen on Dundas, that's already being taken into account, that that infrastructure at the bottom, in the core of Six Points, will be taken account, all that growth that will happen on Dundas?
All the growth that's happening on Dundas, that secondary plan is probably due for a refresh, but the road network that's being built now represents the road network that is called for in the...
I'm talking more on the recreation side.
Yeah, well, all the community services and facilities are reassessed when we do the secondary plan improvements, and it does currently call for those improvements. And that's what's being included in the plan.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Byla.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to make sure I understood you correctly, that you said that this is a plan that the city is going at it alone. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct in terms of the financial inputs that are in the report.
So the way that you structured this, the minimum requirements, was to ensure that if the provincial government, the federal government, there's no other programs that come on in here, that this can be built either by the profit or nonprofit sector. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct. What we've tried to do in this proposal is to create certainty with respect to the offering process so that we can actually get a shovel in the ground.
Great. We talk about, a lot about St. Lawrence, and this project is three times the size of St. Lawrence, correct?
Actually, I haven't done that math, but let's put it this way. Combine the 11 sites together, I know it's half the size of Kensington Market.
Okay. Can you remind us again, what was the city's participation on the capital investment at St. Lawrence Market back in the day?
So through the chair, we're talking 50 years ago or so, and generally, the city of Toronto's participation in the early nonprofit housing programs was between 8% and 12% of the overall capital cost to deliver it, with no operating funding, yet as we know today, through federal and provincial sources, there is operating funding that goes to places like St. Lawrence.
Right, that produce rent gear-to-income units, RGI, correct?
Through the chair, that is correct. The rent gear-to-income programs have come historically through federal and provincial funding sources.
So if we didn't have this, the format of this program, and we wanted to produce a rent gear-to-income just for these 3,700 units, how much would that cost?
Through the chair, just...
Madam Speaker, can I have a little bit of silence?
Yes.
Through the chair, in the event that you were to...
Just a sec, hold on, hold on. If I can please have some quiet in the council chambers, please, members of council. Counselor Pasternak?
Through the chair.
Thank you.
Counselor, a rent gear-to-income program layered into the 7,000, 3,700 units over 99 years is $8 to $10 billion.
$8 to $10 billion?
That's correct.
Okay. Also, if, so you picked the guiding principles of having the sites being on a lease, a 99-year-old lease, create the most affordable housing, the deepest affordable housing. So we have here the minimum standards, is that correct? It's not that, I mean, we're only going to get one-third. This is the minimum that we're accepting. Has it been the case with other projects that sometimes we get more?
Through the chair, I'm reluctant to say that insofar as we're in some new territory here. I'll remind you that a month ago, all of these sites essentially were going to be sold to the marketplace and would have been condominiums. And so we are really in a very different space in the course of the last month in where we were going with these lands and where we are today. And so, as I said earlier, we would like to achieve and hope to achieve better in terms of affordability and the number of affordable units. This is the base program, which we actually do not see going below.
But, for example, I see here on the breakdown that you give us, some of these sites, for example, have no market non-rental, so they're basically 50% affordable. So each of these sites will have its own business case, and the minimum is what you've put in the report, but the business case is individual set for each of these sites?
Through the chair, we have been, in the view of the staff that have been involved in putting this together forward, and it's been a multidisciplinary group of staff, including the Create TO folks, we've been as aggressive as we think we can be with the amount of money in leveraged land and forgiven fees that is available. I can't do magic if I don't have the tools to do it. This is as aggressive as we think we can be.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. If I can ask, please, to staff and members of council, if you can try to keep it down because it gets very noisy, please. Counselor Pasternak. Counselor Fletcher, please, it's very noisy. Counselor Matlow.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. To you to Mr. Gaddan. Mr. Gaddan, you received questions earlier, Mr. Gaddan, you received questions earlier challenging the rationale for leaving room in the strategy for land sales on the 11 sites. What I haven't heard from you is your articulation for why you believe that should be part of the strategy, not the preference, but an allowance for land sales. And moreover, has there been any modeling done? I haven't seen it, so I wonder, has there been modeling done that demonstrates that you may need to sell, you know, a certain amount of square feet to be able to enable the strategy overall? Or, in other words, what is your rationale?
Counselor, through the chair, as you're aware, the sites range in 70 units, I think at the low, up to over 2,000 units. And so they're very unique and different, given the size and the scale of these different developments. And so we've designed here something that... And so, we've designed here something that provides some flexibility within the offering process for groups to come back within a set of criteria. And you wanna be as flexible as possible insofar as getting the best proposals, in not tying down pieces of them that we actually don't know today and can't give you advice about, because we don't know how the market, whether it be the nonprofit, the private market, will respond to this.
Why, why, why wouldn't we, though, bacon right now that we just don't wanna sell any of the land, and we'd like to do this entirely on 90-plus-year leases, or, like, why, why wouldn't we do it that way?
So, I, in response, through the Chair, I can tell you both the nonprofit and the for-profit ownership organizations have a problem working with leases on ownership housing. So, and we've run a number of programs, the former City of Toronto did, where essentially, as you get closer to the end of the lease, that asset for that resident becomes worthless, essentially. And so, as a homeownership approach, the moment you move in, it starts depreciating because of it being on a land lease. And so, we thought it was better to use a conventional approach, but also to be able to use potentially the condominium development where it's proposed, as a profit center, to help subsidize the construction-
To favor the rest of the-
To subsidize the construction of both the rental, but particularly the affordable rental housing, because I just, this proposal does not actually contain any money to construct the affordable rental housing. None, zero.
So, that's part of your strategy to be able to fund, fund the rest?
The entire proposal is based on a leveraged strategy to use the funding and the, and the profit and the, and the benefits associated with the market housing to get you to the affordable. That's the uniqueness of it.
And, and once the, once the RFP goes out, and we receive the proposals, and they're reviewed, does council then have another crack at then approving whatever is ultimately accepted through the proposal, the, the RFP process?
So, given the fact that we're looking to expedite this initiative, and you're giving us base criteria, the 11 sites will essentially be reviewed by staff and approved through a staff process. So, otherwise, you're gonna open up, I, you know, suggest to you, through the Chair, that we're gonna come back to here, and we're gonna have to go through essentially opening up the bids and determining whether the bids were successful or not, and what they gave us and didn't give us. And I will suggest to you that that will, again, chill the bidding process, because there'll be no certainty associated with whether council will approve that or not. So, you're giving us a base program here to work with, and trusting us, as your professionals, to go out and get this done.
The, the question around imposing our own rent control now, would you have any objection to inserting that, at the very least, into the consideration process for reviewing the proposals? So that we can perhaps, in, you know, where we're able to do it, say, you know, if, if we're making whatever kind of arrangement we are, you know, with you, the partner, you know, the winning proposal, that you are restricted from imposing AGIs, for example, for so many years? Is that something that you would feel comfortable with on a case-by-case basis?
Through the Chair, it's an excellent question, Councillor. We are committed in the bidding process to request that the bidders indicate to us what type of tenant protections would be available for those units that would not, or both the affordable and the market units. Whether they go as far as imposing rent control with respect to those, I'm not sure, in particular because the financial institutions that will be required to be funding the, and financing these projects may have some concerns with, in that regard. So, we're not looking to build in criteria that then is gonna knock out the feasibility.
That was your last question, Councillor Matlow? Councillor Matlow?
As part of the consideration, we'll be looking at what tenant protections they're providing.
Thank you. Councillor Holliday, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to the, I believe, the chief planner for this. This report before us is a lot about setting up a process that sets the conditions right to encourage the type of development that we're looking for. And then, actually, there's a section in here about expediting and providing planning I take it, we are, we're actually performing part of the development function, not all of it, but part of it, because we're starting to set up the conditions and start to think about the built form and the opportunities that these sites hold. Are we skipping any steps that a developer might otherwise do in terms of our process to approve these type of sites or consult with the public?
Through the Speaker, the, the process that we're putting forward in the report does not skip steps, but it does economize by putting, putting in place city-initiated zoning bylaws that are, I would say, procurement-ready. But in order for council to, to, to opine on those zoning bylaw amendments, we will go through the normal planning process on those sites. So, the city will be in the applicant's seat, if you will, and we will go out with local councillors and discuss the massing and the, the site planning requirements for these sites with the public in their communities, as we normally would. It's just that the city is in the applicant's seat at that point in the process, and we will have a statutory meeting like we normally do, give notice, everything will be the same.
But it'd be-
And it will put, it will put that pre-zoning in place that gives the predictability and certainty, for certainty for the bidders who come along later.
Is it fair to say that our, the process around this would be equal or better to that of a private developer in an otherwise equal circumstance, that they're just simply surplus properties that have been sold and sold off to create housing?
I would say the city will be in a better position, because we'll be in the driver's seat in terms of determining what the development requirements will be for the site.
Okay, so, part of the, part of the process is to consult with a variety of stakeholders. In the instance, and I'm gonna go right to Etobicoke Centre, some of this development is over commuter parking. Are the people that park in the space today considered stakeholders in this, and would they be consulted in this process?
I would say that the people who park in the spaces today are stakeholders, yes, and we will find a way to consult with all of the stakeholders involved in those, who are impacted by those developments.
Now, you, you had mentioned, there was, through the, the questions with councillor Grimes, that there was some opportunity for city building in these processes, and there is a mechanism at which you connect with city departments. I'm thinking more about the availability of parking in the Etobicoke Centre vicinity. Who's watching that, and is that even considered a city-building exercise to provide, and I'm not saying commuter parking, I'm just using the word parking, to ensure that there's adequate parking supply in these, in these areas?
Through the Speaker, absolutely. The, the review of these sites, in fact, the review of the, ongoing review of the impact of development of these sites on the centre, we put through a travel demand management lens. So, we're looking at the, the appropriate provision of, of parking, understanding that those parking demands are falling across the city, especially in high-transit areas. So, we'll look at the, the appropriate provision of parking, and also other mobility options that can be brought to the people who will eventually be living in those areas.
So, I understand travel demand management, and I understand that, that global notion of falling parking rates, but I would put to you that those lots are full today, and I suspect they would be full for a long time in the future. Is there a mechanism, though, to actually ensure that there is some place for people to park, understanding the relationship between commuter parking and casual parking, because a lot of people go to those regions just to visit a doctor, go to the bank, go to a professional service, the type of economic growth that we're trying to stimulate in those areas by the addition of housing and transit?
Through the Speaker, each, each site will look, we will look at the specific needs of, of, of the site and the area and the land uses that are being proposed, within a policy framework of, of understanding that we don't want to induce excessive parking demand in these areas. So, we'll put it through that lens, and we will seek to balance the opportunities, if they present themselves, for parking and other, and other arrangements that can, that can be provided to induce other modal choices.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you very much, Speaker. I guess, Mr. Gaddin, or the Chief Financial Officer, can you tell me what is the market value of the, the 11 sites?
Through, through, through the Chair, the, the Create TO is currently doing an appraisal of all of the sites, so we don't have a current value for you, but it is substantial, and it's in the hundreds of millions of dollars.
Right, so hundreds of millions of dollars. I, I wondered then, with respect to the comment I believe you addressed, I believe it was councillor Matlow, you talked about the strategy that we're utilizing, because in essence, we have the value, which is the asset, the lands, and then you're basically bringing the private sector, variety of those who are not for profit, those who are for profit and so on, as part of the approach in terms of strategically developing these sites. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, that is correct. The city, with respect to the affordable rental units, though, as has been its practice, will waive the development charges, the planning, the billing permit fees, and also during the term of the affordability, the 99 years, the affordable units, in order to keep them more affordable-
Right.
-will not pay property taxes.
Okay, I, I understand that. And so, the value, though, of the land will be extremely important in terms of your assessing in terms of what we are going to get, whether or not it's for affordable housing pieces, and the values of condos and the, the market rent units. Well, that, it's, isn't that something that we really need to understand before we make some of the final decisions that we would be required to make in terms of how we'll actually transition the lands?
Through the Chair, Councillor, this is a pretty standard practice, where essentially, what we're proposing here is, in addition to the incentives that you've mentioned-
Right.
-that the construction of the other housing could cross-subsidize the other projects. There will be a very large city, Create TO, and also a brokerage firm that will be assisting us in-
So, we'll have the expert help that we need. That's what I wanted to get to.
That's-
So, I know that, obviously, our desire is to affect the challenge and the issue around affordable housing and housing that is obviously in need in the City of Toronto. But what I'd like to, to, to ask, based on some of the questions that members of council have been asking, about the idea of increasing the, the affordable component of housing, I'm a little bit troubled with respect to our relationship. If we look, for example, in the past at Regent Park, and areas in Scarborough, and other areas across the city, where we seem to have what we've actually done, we have created a socioeconomic condition where we're housing certain people in terms of income level in a particular area. And so, our strategy, though, is to try to affect that, is that correct? As part of our approach?
Through the Chair, absolutely, which is why the report speaks about creating mixed-income communities through this initiative, as opposed to, and just by way of example, Regent Park, where you've replaced-
Yes.
-the existing rent gear-to-income housing, and you've built market condominiums. You've not built any new purpose-built rental housing. This particular initiative recognizes that it's a really important goal to achieve new purpose-built rental housing in the city, recognizing that even in the last five years, 80,000 condominium units have opened, and 4,500 rental housing units have opened. So, you're getting, in this initiative, more rental housing than has opened in the city in the last-
Right.
-five years, or that city council has approved previously. So, we think it's actually a pretty good direction as to where you want the industry to begin to focus, as opposed to the condominium business.
And so, and can someone tell me, please, what our budget will be for 2019 for our investment into the homeless and the housing shortage? I have a number for 2019, it's about $313,364,823,000. Last year, we spent $260,111,079. Is that correct, Mr. Rafferty? Can you maybe help me?
Through the Chair, that is correct.
So, there have been some people who've said to me, we haven't done anything to address this issue. That magnitude and this delta dollar sum suggests that we have been listening and we have actually been making investment in this area, because we're quite concerned? Would that be correct?
Through the Chair, that is correct.
Okay, that's it for the questions. Speakers, Mayor Torry.
Speaker, I have a motion that we'll just put up on the screen if we could, and it, I hope, it, it takes into account a number of the points that were obviously coming out in the questions this morning with respect to considerations that we would like to see included in the detailed framing of the request for proposals. And I think a lot of the questions, I certainly heard, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, Mr. Gaddin and others answering questions, indicating that it was always the case, and continues to be the case, that these considerations that I have for a purpose of gathering them together and making sure they're put in one place, as the first speaker, could, could, make sure we provide to them, assuming this motion was passed by council, as I hope it will be, as a means of saying to them, yes, on the one hand, we want you to address these things, and I won't read the list, 'cause it's all up there and all circulated for you to see, but at the same time, we want you to do it within the context of exactly what Mr. Gaddin said a number of times this morning. And I will say for myself, Madam Speaker, I trust our officials. Mr. Gaddin made the point earlier, not in a moment of immodesty, because he's a modest man, but he said, I have 25 years' experience. And I think if you match that up with the experience that others who are working with him have in this area, to, to devise a request for proposals for these 11 pieces of land that are going to be successful in terms of having a robust response that produces, obviously, from our standpoint, as much affordable, deeply affordable, supportive, you know, rental housing as you possibly could do, while giving up as little as possible in the context of any kind of questions of land ownership and others, that's obviously what I think we all want to do. But the risk that we run, Madam Speaker, and I wanna put, use some of my time just to indicate to the members of council that, that I will be voting against some other motions that may be coming, that I anticipate may be coming from others. I think we're starting to minimize that down through an exercise like this, where this is meant to be responsive to a number of the very valid concerns and objectives that, that I share. This is meant to be responsive of that, to indicate to our staff as they go about doing this, that we want these things taken into account, and to use the wording of the motion, it says, "Provide greater consideration in the offering process to proposals that address the following issues." And then it goes through of levels of affordability, deeper levels of affordability, and so forth and so on. But I will be voting against those motions that have the effect of, in effect, rendering, rendering ineffective or potentially ineffective this entire RFP process. It's like a Christmas tree. If you have a Christmas tree that's standing up, and you put too many ornaments on it, it's gonna fall over eventually. And I think we run the risk here of doing what we always, or, not always, but we often do, which is taking a significant opportunity to move forward, what Mr. Gaddin just described as a huge opportunity to build rental housing generally, to, to achieve a number of rent, of affordable rental units that is in excess of anything that's been done since the St. Lawrence community, at, at one, at one sitting, as it were, where we, they'll all come individually, but when you add it all up, it has the potential to be something that will make a significant opening contribution. And I wanna emphasize that, as I did in my remarks earlier this morning. This is just the beginning. My determination on this is absolute, in terms of saying that we're going to meet and exceed, if we possibly can, the targets that have been set, because the need is so urgent. But what we can't do is, is kind of render this dead or very ill on arrival from the beginning by layering on top, as we do in this chamber. We have experts to provide us with the best advice possible as to what's gonna achieve a, a robust, and hopefully a wide array of choices for us to look at in terms of what's best to achieve those objectives, and we will then say, no, no, we know better. We know better in the context of what are, I understand, admittedly, valid objectives we're trying to achieve, but they've told us what they think is gonna be the right kind of process to achieve the most we possibly can in this context. I said this morning, I'd be thrilled if every one of these sites was, ended up being won by a nonprofit housing organization. I'd be thrilled by that. But at the end of the day, they know what is best in terms of having a degree of open availability of opportunity for different kinds of groups and combinations of people to come forward, because, as he said, Mr. Gaddin, this Madam Speaker, there is a model they have to implement that sort of says that in order to finance and operate these developments, if I can call it that on these parcels, this, the math- if I can call it that on these parcels, the mathematics have to work. It's a straightforward business proposition that applies to the nonprofit sector, and as much as it applies to the government, and to the private sector. Finally, I would just say, a point that was made in the last few minutes, based on some of the questioning of Counselor Thompson, which is that our desire, I think, as a council, is to create new mixed-income communities. And that we don't want to create an either-or situation. I think that's what we're trying to do everywhere. We're trying to do this. And so, I just hope we keep that in mind in dealing with some of these motions. But I do want to thank people for the constructive questioning. I thank them in advance for the speeches that will come, because I often speak last, and urge people to take this motion as reflecting our concern on a number of these areas, and our guidance to the staff to make sure that the proposal call process takes those into account. But please, don't wreck this and ruin it, or diminish its chances of success in advance by layering too many things on that make it something that's ineffective from the first minute. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. I'm sorry, can you put-- you're not allowed-- I'm sorry-- Okay, can I have security? Can I have security out there, please? Please. If there's any further disruption, I will ask you to leave. Please. Yes, Counselor Carroll, you have questions to the mayor.
Just a quick question, Madam Speaker, because I do see a lot of the issues that have come up since executive consideration supported here. The one that I don't see is one that I raised in the first briefing of this, that I hear time and time again when, in meeting with people from my revitalization neighborhoods, which is, "Okay, who lives here? Who gets to live here?" And so, while I don't see it here, because it doesn't really fit in a building report, you have no resistance to my asking staff to report back on how we will deal with options for how we allocate these units in the future?
When I first got here, Madam Speaker, through you, I asked the question, when we were starting to approve affordable housing units, which I was delighted at doing, "How do we determine who gets these?" And I got an answer that was kind of a combination of confusing and unsatisfactory. And I think we need to have much greater transparency. We much need to have-- and I think so the bottom-line answer is, to me, it is a very worthy use of the staff's time to take a look while we're at it, because we're now going to have 11, as I heard the answer to your question earlier, on 11 different lotteries, as it were. And I think we should take a look. Now's the time, before we have 11 of those, to say, "Is that the right way to do this?" And, you know, all the questions that flow from that. So I have no resistance. In fact, I welcome that review. I think it would be very useful to do it at this juncture.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Questions, Counselor Perks?
Thank you, Speaker. Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure I've understood it correctly. You've got, you know, A through H, all these different things, more units, deeper affordability, but this is a request to staff to consider it. It's not a direction.
It's a request to staff-- Yes, Madam Speaker, through you. Yes, it's a request to staff, made within the context of the answers that I heard Mr. Gaddan giving earlier on, which is that they recognize what our objectives are, and they've been set out here again. And I stated them again, because I think I understand them fairly well in terms of maximizing all the things that you would think of are of benefit to the people we're trying to help, that are in need of the most help, as it were. And so, yes, it's a request, and they will come back with a document that relates to these requests for proposals, the 11 of them, that I hope will accommodate all of these things. But they will do it within that context I referenced, which is that you have to balance the inclusion of all these things and the way in which you include it against the fact that we need and we want a robust response from the nonprofit and the other elements of the housing community to make sure this works.
Okay, just to be clear, so the other 37 recommendations that we're giving to staff, those are directions. They must do them. What you're doing here is asking them to be mindful of other things, but you're not saying you must do them.
But I think if you look at the two lists, as it were, A through H, and you look at the list of the other recommendations, these are ones that go to the root of the viability of this process that we are embarking upon. And I trust our staff to make sure, because they have 25 years' experience at this, and so on and so forth, repeating that, to achieve the balance between the things we want to see addressed and included, and taking that to a length that would actually produce an unsuccessful result. So I'm trusting them. But, you know, they're going to take this on board, and I think they understand this is our wish, to see as much of this included as possible. And it says, "Provide greater consideration in the offering process to proposals that include these features."
But it doesn't change the evaluation criteria that they're using, or anything like that?
Well--
Because we actually spell out--
We're asking them to give greater consideration, but we're asking them to do it within the context of going as far as they can without-- and if we direct them, then you are sort of effectively imposing on them requirements that concern me taken as a whole, as a whole list, that we could do exactly what they advised us against doing, which is to so layer on so many requirements in this thing that we end up with nobody responding to it. I'm just about, and I think we all are in here, trying to get as much affordable, supportive, deeply affordable rental housing built as possible on these 11 pieces of valuable city land we're putting up, and to get it done as quickly as possible.
Thank you, I understand.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Fletcher, questions?
Yes, just picking up from what Counselor Perks was saying. I'm reading this, "In overseeing the market offering process, to provide greater consideration in the offering process to proposals that address the following issues." So, I just will clarify that the goals that are being here, are laid out here, are deepening some of the 32 recommendations. And so, I'm reading this, that somebody responds to different firms respond to one of the sites, that the one that would have these pieces built in in some way would be given greater consideration. So it won't just be, "I can do this, and here's my price." It will be, "I can do this, here's my price, and I'm adding these other things in." So when we're looking at that evaluation, RFP and tendering, we're really looking, who can build some of these things in to their response?
That is correct. As I see it, Madam Speaker, you know, to put it in, hopefully, a way that isn't overly simplistic, if you had a point system for looking at those who respond, you would-- we're asking the staff, and we are asking. I fully concede that point. We're not directing. We're asking them, because they are the ones that I believe, Madam Speaker, will exercise the right degree of expertise in assessing the balance between how much benefit you give for these kinds of things so as not to chase people out of the bidding process. But yes, you'd get an extra point based on how many of these they include in the criteria for having more deeply affordable, or for having more affordable, or for having more effective means of protecting the rent in the market-controlled unit. So that's, yes, that is the intention of this.
And so, it's not a point system, but it is a--
Well, some way of judging these. It takes into account our wish to see as many of these things incorporated in a way, again, that respects that balance, that I think our staff have the expertise to judge so as to do as much of this as you can in this election process, but not such that you layer on so many things that nobody bids.
And you're not anticipating that every single site would have each one of these?
I would doubt that would be the case, but far be it from me. I mean, I hope--
Maybe.
I hope, as I said, I'd be thrilled if every one of these ended up in the hands of a nonprofit housing provider. I'd be thrilled if they all put in far more affordable housing than we expect, so those numbers go from 3,700 to some other much higher number. I'd be thrilled if there was supportive housing, given the efforts I was making yesterday with the Government of Canada to get those governments to move on this and help us. I'd be thrilled at that. But I suspect you're right, that there probably won't be every one of these addressed in every single site. But if we can get many of them addressed on many sites, or all of them, I think that's a forward achievement.
And more than likely, there'll be roundtables where developers and nonprofits all be invited in to hear about the process and understand exactly the goals we have for these lands. And these will all be included as the subset, or part of the set.
I assume, Madam Speaker, yes, that will be the case. And of course, we've got some inducements in the overall scheme here to facilitate the full participation of the nonprofit sector. And we heard Mr. Lintern indicating the community will be involved. We can't ignore that either, in terms of some of these items, where the community will sit at the table and help us to make the right decisions about each of these 11 proposals, each of these 11 sites.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wong Chan?
Speaker, with respect to the motion that's before us, and recognizing that the mayor himself has just said that he would be thrilled if all these considerations could be put into the procurement process, I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, there was also the question from Counselor Fletcher that there would be a roundtable set up to bring the stakeholders to the table to sort of go through the expectations of the city. Will these stakeholders include the other orders of government?
Honestly, Madam Speaker, through you can't answer that question. I mean, I-- one thing I did discover in my trip to Ottawa yesterday is that, you know, we've got the usual problem in matching what we're trying to do here on all fronts, not just this, with the affordable housing strategy of the federal government. And of course, as yet, we really don't know what the intentions of the provincial government are with respect to the entire area of housing. But if you ask me, would I have any problem whatsoever with the notion of including those two governments? To me, not so much so they can sort of be listening in with interest, but rather, we can perhaps hold them to account to some extent in terms of trying to induce their participation on a broad and consistent way. I would say I'd be totally happy to try and help make that happen, in fact.
The Vancouver Affordable Housing Agency specifically builds housing that is not met by the private market sector. And they do receive support from the British Columbia government, as well as the federal government. All three orders of government are at the table, unlocking city-owned lands. And the result is 100% rentals, 100% affordable, and 100% nonprofit-owned and operated. How do we, by way of your motion, and if we invite the provincial and federal government to the table, which we haven't specified yet in this report, how do we ensure that type of outcome?
Well, I would say, Madam Speaker, that it may be the case that what we're talking about here is apples and oranges, in the sense that this is a very specific initiative that we're trying to make work founded on the contribution, if that's the right word, of public land to get a process going that induces then the nonprofit and/or private sectors to come in and leverage that, and leverage their own activities to produce as much of the kind of mixed housing that we want, including a significant portion of affordable housing. Again, I've made it very clear today and many previous times that in bringing this forward as quickly as I did, because it was me that asked for this initially, right after the election, in fact, before the election, this is a first step. And if we want to take a second step that sits down with those other two governments and says, "All right, we now would like to move to the next stage that is going to be required for us to even come close to meeting the targets we've set," which would consist, say, of something that, with their help, would be 100% rental and 100% affordable, I am very happy. Because I concurred in the statement made by the man who showed up at the Executive Committee and said he hopes this was an annual event. And I said this morning, "It can't just be annual. We've got to be coming up with something like this, and different things like this, to achieve our objectives every few months, as we go forward in this term." And I'm determined to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And final question. In your meeting with the big city mayor's caucus, and with the Prime Minister himself, recognizing that the Housing Now initiative and plan was to be before council the very next day, what did the Prime Minister say when you proposed to him that he and the federal government come to the table to specifically participate in the funding and participation of the delivery of the Housing Now report?
I will just say, Madam Speaker, the nature of the discussion with the Prime Minister and the time available didn't permit that kind of granular question. It's difficult sometimes for a city, in that meeting with all the other mayors, to get into that level of granularity with him in a limited time. I did, however, discuss this with all of the other ministers and MPs that I met with. And I will just say that, within the context of a number of matters I raised with which included supportive housing in particular, and some of our current housing initiatives, that I think it is in their interest, and it's in our interest, and more importantly, in the interest of the people we serve, to have us all participating together under the National Housing Strategy. So I can say that the response was generally favorable. But did I get somebody saying, "You know, we're there and signed up to be part of this"? No, I didn't. But I was certainly, they were very much aware of the fact I was making the case for a number of the things we'll discuss in this meeting, including the supportive housing goals, and also some of these initiatives we're undertaking. And I've repeated my desire to see them. Frankly, one of my happiest moments would be if they came forward with 10 parcels of land of their own, because they've done the inventory, and they did it at my request, they've done it across the country. And I think it would be great if they came forward with 10 parcels, and we could run a similar process, maybe with the kind of objective you talked about earlier, that said those would be set aside deliberately from the beginning with their land and financial participation to produce all rental and all affordable. I don't know if that's possible, but we're still waiting for them to offer some land. But I think the discussions were generally positive. You know, you have to keep at these things. Rarely do you go in a room and say, "Are you on?", and they say, "Yes." You know, "Where do we send the check?"
Thank you.
Counselor Cressy to speak.
Well, thank you, Speaker. And I'll start by placing a motion, though I'll acknowledge that two of the items on the motion, I believe, are now moot, related to-- this is items two and four, and I'll speak to that in a moment. I think the context here, and I will take a step back, which is, in a city where we have rising poverty, strained rental housing markets, a dangerous overdose crisis, recent cuts from the province to official assistance, and an absence of sufficient funds from other levels of government, when you combine all of those together, it has resulted in a deeply unaffordable city. And tragically, far too often, it has resulted, when you combine those factors together, a deadly city. A city where we have people, more than 100 last year, homeless people who die. And so, further to a conversation that we've been having in the last couple of weeks, whether you call this a crisis, an emergency, a disaster, whether you call it all of the above, whatever it is, it is critical that collectively, as a city, we roll up our sleeves and do absolutely everything in our power to build a more affordable city. So how do we do that? How do we address chronic homelessness at the same time? It starts with the housing ladder and the spectrum of housing needs. For people who are lucky enough to be middle-class, the rental vacancy rate is a paltry 1.1%, and we need increased purpose-built rental, and we need increased purpose-built rental that has a security of tenure and rent control. It means for the 181,000 people who are looking for permanent affordable housing, it means that we need housing for them. For the 18,000 people who need supportive and transitional housing, it means we need housing for them. And for the 9,000 people who are far too often living rough on our streets or coast surfing, for the 9,000 homeless people, we need housing for them. So city-owned land, and Housing Now, and where we are today, our land is, in this context, our most valuable asset to bring to the discussion in how we create that more affordable city. And I will commend and thank our staff for all the work they've put into this. And I will commend and thank Counselor and Deputy Mayor Bailow and the mayor for making this the first key item that we're dealing with in this term. I want to thank them for that. But I will say, and this is the spirit of my motion, that I think Housing Now is a start, but it needs to go further. And towards that, the motion in front of you, which I hope the outstanding two items on there, with respect to a firm target with respect to supportive housing, and a firm target with respect to co-ops and nonprofits owning part of the housing here, I hope the mayor will see those as friendly. Because there are areas in the report in front of us that I think can and should be improved, and that we, together, should come together to do so. For supportive housing, we need, in this dangerous winter, we are talking for good reasons about the need to provide shelter to those who are experiencing homelessness. But if we are providing shelter but not a pathway out of shelter, then we are not ending homelessness. And so, to ensure that we have supportive housing built into this model is key. To ensure that for the nonprofit and co-op sector, that they're not just partners, but that they are owners and operators, not only strengthens their capacity, it increases their equity and capital to do more, to build more housing. With respect to rent control, we need to ensure, with the new provincial legislation, that the applications that are coming forward[1772.28] that the applications that are coming forward include measures on tenant protection, and I think we all need to ensure that when these reports come back, that we are doing absolutely everything possible to not only increase the amount of affordability, but to deepen that affordability. And so for me, and I hope for all of us, in this term of council, the issue of housing affordability for everyone, whether you need supportive housing, permanent housing, rental housing, or if you're homeless and you need that first step into a transitional home, I hope that this is the defining issue of our term. If, and I hope that when, with respect to Housing Now, that this, I believe, is an important and critical first step. I hope that we strengthen it here today. And I hope that next year, when we do this again, that we've built a model that will get us to 50% affordable, or 70% affordable. But I hope this is the start, and let's make it the calling card for all of us in this term of council. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have question. Counselor Baileau, three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just want to confirm that you've actually checked with staff, and there's a strong, strong confidence that we can, we have foresight that our nonprofit sector have the capability of bidding and, and be successful in operating, correct?
So with respect to, this is specifically item number one in my motion, that we target four sets, four of the 11 sites to be owned and operated. I have worked and consulted closely with Sean Gaddin and our city staff, and I know I've had conversations with you as well. And this is a target that we believe is the minimum that can be achieved, but it is a target that can be achieved in the financial model here, and I think we should make that happen.
Thank you. And it, that means that, as you're saying, it's the minimum, there's, even for the bigger sites, by conversations with the nonprofit, which, we know that there's already starting to, to, conversations to happen between affordable homeownership agencies and nonprofit and co-ops and the private sector. So we're still open for the other sites to continue to have the participation of the nonprofit. This is the minimum, and it is achievable, correct?
I, I would say that is correct, and I would expose my own bias here, which is to say that I would like to get to a position where every single site, every single affordable or supportive housing unit is owned and operated, if not by the city, by the co-op and nonprofit sector. That is where I want to get to and go. And the intention of this motion here is to set a target of one-third of the, which staff have indicated they know is possible, but not to exclude the possibility of more coming on board. We need to strengthen the capacity of the nonprofit sector and build it into this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Leighton to speak?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have three motions. First, that City Council request the Executive Director Housing Secretariat, in consultation with the Director of Affordable Housing Office, direct real estate services and CRETO to ensure that, one, 50% of the total unit, residential units in the 11 Housing Now sites meet the criteria of affordability as defined in the city's official plan and in the Housing Now report, and, two, of that 50%, 20% be deeply affordable, with rents set at 40% of the average market rate as defined in the report. Second motion is that City Council direct the Deputy City Manager, Community and Social Services, to add a, a property at 19 Spadina Road, it's a provincially-owned property, to the list in the appendix, in Appendix Three, that are sites that they're approaching the province about, and that's for the use of affordable housing. And then, three, that City Council direct the Executive Director Housing Secretariat to consider the use of refundable debt to finance any future affordable housing projects. Quite simply, I think that we're missing an opportunity here. I agree with the intent, and I think that, that, that the mayor and Counselor Baileau have the best of intentions to see us grow our portfolio of affordable housing in the city, but I believe, I personally believe, that we can do better. We need to be bold. The city of Toronto residents deserve that. They're demanding that of us. Those struggling to find housing, those struggling to pay for the housing that they're in, those underhoused, trying to find appropriate-sized housing for their families. By relying too heavily on profit-driven private sector, we are abdicating our responsibility of a government to actually take action. And I think there's three things I wanted to highlight in this report. One is on the use of the CMHC averages to drive this process. The second is on, as we heard today in the answer, our changes to our definition of refundable debt, and how that can work in our favor for the, the affordable housing sector. And then finally, on the number of affordable housing units and the depth of affordability. On the average rents, you see, I, I've always had difficulty with this definition of affordable housing, as I think all of you have. That using the average rent of the city of Toronto as your definition for affordable is, is really a stretch, right? Like, most people know, if you're, if you're the average, if you're using the average, then it's probably not terribly affordable. But in this particular report, we're asking for 80% of the CMHC citywide average. So I looked up that average from the CMHC website, and for a one-bedroom, it's $1,270, and for a two-bedroom, it's $1,494. And then I looked up each individual site and their neighborhood rate. And one of them, one of them jumps right out at me, and this is the Blour Islington site, if my geography of that corner is correct, in the neighborhood that's, that it's identified on the CMHC site, a two-bedroom average is actually below the city's 80% average. It's 78% of the city's average, and a one-bedroom's 83%. The 705 Warden site is already in the 80% band of the city average. So what are we actually asking of developers in this? To deliver us the average rent of those communities already, or, or within percentage points of it, and not even for all the units? For 30% of the units? So really, we're not asking very much in some of these cases. There are three of the sites that are slightly over the CMHC average, but that's only three of the 11, and some are actually below the 80% already, one in particular. But there's a whole band that are in that 80 to 90%. So really, are we asking that much? Are we really putting our properties to the test to try to deliver for Toronto residents? And I don't think so. And, and, and I think we've, we've ignored a tool, and that's because I think we're, we've been afraid to get involved in the business of building affordable housing, the actual business of building it. We have, over the last couple of years, defined the, our refundable debt as one that, when we can guarantee an income source, what better than mixed-income housing, to guarantee that source? That takes profit out of the picture and gives us the ownership model. It also does one thing, and this is probably the most important part, it doesn't compete with other city priorities. It doesn't compete with the mayor's transit priorities, it doesn't compete with any other city capital priorities, because it doesn't count towards our debt ceiling. Let me say that again. It doesn't count towards our debt ceiling. Means we can free up as much debt as we want, if it's refundable debt, because we know it's getting paid back, and we can build the housing ourselves. We take profit out of the picture, and we can put all of that money, not, maybe not all the housing, because we want to build a mixed-income community, we, we want to make it sustainable, but we can build, we can put that profit back into affordable housing, rather than just give it in a way, this decision is too important...
Thank you, Counselor Leighton. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, after, sorry, afternoon, yeah. I just want to, Counselor Cressy asked me to let the Board of House members know that there is a meeting today at 12:45, that will be approximately 15 minutes, just to remind the members of the committee, and we'll recess to 2 o'clock. Thank you.